My name is Ellen Wiss and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, as well as trained and certified as an LWV moderator. I have the pleasure of moderating this forum on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Duluth and would like to welcome everyone. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this general issues pre-election forum for the ISD 709 School Board District 3. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to participate in local government and in this event. The League of Women Voters believes that informed citizenry is the foundation of efficient democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. The League of Women Voters of Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. Let us pause to acknowledge our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all of our activities. You're invited to join us. For more information, check at our website, lvwduluth.org. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works at the state, local, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at today's forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters of Duluth. Additionally, LWV sponsorship of this forum is not a league endorsement of any of the individual participating candidates. Please remember to exercise your right to vote in the primary election on Tuesday, August 8. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates in the studio. Lauren Martel and Henry Banks. Valerie Jakel and Matt Moses were not able to attend. Our forum will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by the questioning round. The questions have been vetted by our Voter Services Committee. Candidates are not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to two minutes in which to provide their response. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked questions in rotating order. The order in which candidates will respond was determined at random and we will rotate the responses throughout the forum. After the questioning round is completed, each candidate will follow and will be allowed a two-minute closing statement. Because some candidates could not attend this forum, I will share with you an empty-chair statement provided to us by Matthew Moses. This is from Matthew Moses. "Thank you for the opportunity to participate in the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. Unfortunately, due to work commitments, I'm unable to attend today's forum. To introduce myself, I'm Matthew Moses, a candidate for the Duluth Public School District 3 School Board. My wife and I live in Piedmont Heights neighborhood. My two children have been in the district since they started kindergarten. This fall, they will be in 5th grade at Piedmont Elementary and 7th grade at Lincoln Middle School. With two children in the Duluth Public Schools, it gives me a vested interest in the continued success of the school district. I'm an active member of the Piedmont Community Elementary PTA and have spent many hours volunteering within the school to support various PT activities as well as working with kindergarten on their reading skills. I work remotely as a consultant for IBM where my role is helping to bridge the gap between IT and business. I'm also an adjunct faculty member of the College of St. Scholastica where I teach graduate course in Big Data Management in the Applied Data Analytics Masters of Science Program. I own a successful professional photography business, photographing portraits, landscapes, and youth sports. Within the broader Duluth community, I've also served on the Steering Committee, as a Steering Committee member of the Duluth Homegrown Music Festival. Like many public school districts, we have many challenges that include rising mental health concerns, crowded classrooms, school budgeting, and improving the class offerings of our oldest students. Along with many parents, I've provided feedback during the public schools' community strategic planning process. My initial focus as a school board member will be providing oversight on how the strategic plan gets executed. An integral part of it will be the continuing efforts on prioritizing equity and mental health while supporting all students, no matter their ability level, socioeconomic status, or race. In this time of ever-rising costs, we must be physically disciplined and good stewards of tax dollars that fund the district. I will serve as a strong advocate for our staff and students so that they may have the resources they need to succeed. My perspective as a parent, diverse work experience, and community involvement makes me well-suited to serve our students as a school board member." Okay. Now, we'll begin. Lauren Martel will give his first opening statement.
Hello, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Lauren Martel, one of four candidates running to fill the 3rd District seat on the Duluth School Board. I'm sure the other people running for this office bring their own qualifications to hold that seat, but my own strength is that I've been watching meetings and paying close attention to the job we are seeking for more consecutive years than anyone else in the city. Some missteps have been made over those years, and I believe the best leaders learn from their mistakes and make sure they don't repeat them. The biggest mistake made was not taking the full measure of the future in long-term planning. The world isn't what it was in the 1970s. The public school system served 25,000 students back then, and ISD 709 was virtually the only game in town. There was no open enrollment or charter schools. We have to compete in a more diverse and challenging environment now, and that takes good planning. I think three academic areas are important for the district to expand, to give students the tools they need, and draw more families into our schools: online education, language immersion, and career technical education. All of these academic programs are growth areas in education, but we have them hemmed into very expensive, poorly-planned facilities. We need to plan better going forward. The future is built on the past. Wise leaders use the past as guideposts to judge the right steps forward. I believe the knowledge I've gained over the years would be invaluable in making the right choices moving forward. Thank you again for listening to this forum.
Now, if Mr. Banks, would you give your opening statement?
Sure. Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. My name is Henry Banks, and I am a candidate for ISD 709 School Board District 3 seat. I live in the Central Hillside area of Duluth. I'm a leader who will work to make others better, a result of making sure I listen, to learn, and then implement sound educational policies that are equity-based and impactful. I will work to improve the quality of education and enhance educational opportunities for all. I will work to improve the relationship the Duluth School District has with our very youngest learners and their families. It is important that we strive to make sure we establish policies that are there to make sure reading proficiency by age 3 is a priority in the district. I embrace cooperation and collaboration at every level. It's a priority for me that our equity community gets seats at the table at every decision-making level in the district. It's important that the business community and its investments and involvement in the district be enhanced as it relates to the opportunities for all students. Demographics are changing, folks, and we cannot be remiss in acknowledging the important opportunities that are before us in this, our beloved, community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll start with the first question, Mr. Martel. What made you decide to run for a school board seat? What in your background leads you to believe that you would be an effective school board member?
Well, what made me run is that it's back in the center of the city again. I've been out there for many years, fighting for the people in the center of the city, fighting for their schools, fighting for their voices to be heard in the boardroom. And I think that the center of the city got short shrift in everything that's happened up till now with the capital investment, and I think the people in the center of the city just needs better representation in the boardroom. Also, I bring intellectual diversity to the conversation. I've been around for a very long time, and I've watched the school board make its decisions, some of which weren't very good decisions, and part of the reasons that they made poor decisions, in my judgment, is because they didn't listen to anyone else. So I'm a big advocate for bringing the public into the process. I think many times the public is just ignored in these decisions, many times even denied a vote. And I just believe very strongly that we need to bring the public into these discussions. This extension to the red plan in the middle of the city, for example, was a $40 million investment with bond interest, and hardly anybody in the city even knows what's going on up on that hill. I've sat out there for years, stood out there, I meant to say, for years protesting the fact that we had no vote on it. People come up to me, and they don't even know what's going on. I just don't see that as democracy. And my issue here is that, and I've told the board this before in the past, that if you don't bring the public into the process, you're going to alienate the public, and we need public support for a public institution. And we're going to effectively drive everyone else out of the public schools, and we're going to be left with only their constituency in these schools. So I do think we need to take another tact in how we're governing, and I think I could bring that to the table from all the experience I've had being around the boardroom these years.
Mr. Banks, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
What made you decide to run for a school board seat? What in your background leads you to believe that you would be an effective school board member?
Thank you very much for that question. I do appreciate that. I decided to run for school board because, you know, I'm excited about what is happening right now with the school district and the leadership of the school district and what they are attempting to bring to our district. Having said that, I believe that Duluth schools are fantastic schools with fantastic teachers, fantastic students. I want to just come on board and make this an even better school district. I've always said that Duluth schools in the past were amongst the best in the country, and there is no reason now that they shouldn't be amongst the best in the country. And I believe serving on the school board will give me the opportunity to work with the school district's leadership, and teachers, and students to provide creative leadership in our decision-making at the board level. It's important that our equity community is at the table, at every table, again, in every decision-making opportunity, because our demographics are changing, and we have to be cognizant of those demographic changes, and we need to move forward in making this district all that it can be and should be. That's why I'm running, and that's why I want this seat.
Thank you. The second question goes to you first, Mr. Banks. When you look at the Duluth Public Schools, what are some of the strengths and challenges that you see?
Well, immediately, I would say the strengths are its leadership. The strengths are the students, first and foremost. The strengths are the teachers, who are teaching our children. And I just believe if we get the message out about what's going on right now within the public school system here in Duluth, it will give us even more energy and more excitement in the community here of Duluth, across the state, across the nation, seeing what we are doing to change the situation. Because the pandemic, for example, did not do any school district very well across the country, and so we are regrouping from that. And I think we have the support at the upper levels of administration in ISD 709 to keep moving forward. Graduation rates are up in every level of students, from white to black to native heritage. That's a positive thing. And so those strengths are evident. As far as weaknesses or challenges, I would say opportunities. The school district has opportunities to really start to look at its diversity, equity, and inclusion issues and focus on some of those things that make our community, our school district, better, better, and better. And so we have opportunities to move forward in this way because our demographics are changing, and we need to be cognizant of that.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, you don't need to.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Martel.
Well, there are some strengths, of course, and some good things going on in our schools. And some of the schools get a bad rap that they don't deserve. There's some wonderful things going on in Denfeld, but the only thing people see is that it has a 73% graduation rate, while East has a 92% graduation rate. So we do have some issues there, but there's some great strengths, and there's just a lot of love out there for our public schools. A long tradition in a lot of these schools, families have been going to them for years. We're the biggest player in the marketplace, and we have a lot of good things to offer in our public schools. There are some very big challenges. I would disagree that the pandemic was only a negative for our school district, all that extra money flowing in actually pulled us away from the brink. We were on the brink financially. We were able to put $5 million into the reserve finally from all that extra money pouring in. So in some ways, that was a net positive, all that money coming in, and we're going to be back to reality when that money runs out, and that's a big issue. That's one of the big challenges we have. The levy's gone up by $32 million in a little over a decade and a half. I hear a lot of complaints about the tax burden out in the community, and how do we fix these problems and at the same time not break the backs of the taxpayers? The board is responsible for fiscal control, and the board is the only entity in there that's supposed to represent the public and the public's interests. Administration's looking out for the district, the teachers are looking out for their contracts and their classrooms, and the board's responsibility is to look out for the public. So that's a big challenge. How do we deal with the public and the fact that we're going to need more money? Even the district's saying we're going to need more money before too long, once the COVID relief runs out.
Thank you, Mr. Martel.
Is there a rebuttal opportunity?
There is not. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You'll have an opportunity to speak again, but not yet. Okay. Mr. Martel, you have the first shot at the next question. How would you describe an effective board member?
Well, being a board member is a multifaceted job. It really is. And you're there to represent the students first and foremost and their education, and you're supposed to also be a check and balance on administration and represent the public's interests. All three of those things, and it can be difficult to do. You're going to get pressure no matter what you do. I always tell people, it's not an easy job, and I know that. I've been around there for years. It's a very thankless job. You make maybe $2 an hour if you do the job the way it should be done. It's not like winning a free ticket to paradise to win a spot on the Duluth School Board. But I think that the most effective thing to do is to be open to the people in your district, if you're in a district or across the whole city, to be open to people that are coming to you with suggestions, with complaints, making sure that they're heard, that they feel valued. Many times, I hear from certain groups out there that they don't feel like anybody pays any attention to them and that they can't even be heard, and that is a failure if you are a board member, if the public feels that way. So I do think that's probably the primary job of a school board member, is to be there as a conduit between the community and the district, advocate for the district, of course, but you also have to be very cosinant of the fact that the public pays the bill, and you want to bring them into the conversation at all times and be as responsive as you can be. As a board member, I'm still going out into the community. I'm still going to knock on doors from time to time and ask the public what they think. And a lot of people, when I ask them who the 3rd District representative is currently, they can't even answer that, and I think that's a failure.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
So an effective board member, in my opinion, is one that listens, one that learns, one that implements sound policies that benefit every student in the district in an equitable way. An effective school board member is a cheerleader for the district in every way, cheerleading for the students and families of the district. An effective school board member is creative, resource-oriented, and is the voice for the district in every way. And what I mean by that is that if we are going to be leaders on the school board, yes, indeed, we must be positive about what's going on in our district. We need to be approachable in our district. We need to also work with administration so that administration can implement what the board is wanting implemented in the district, and there cannot be a continuation of negativity related to the district, because it's all about change, it's all about growth, it's about making sure that we say to the state of Minnesota, we say to our local leaders and officials that we have the best school district in the region, if not the state, and that we work together to make sure that happens for every single student. That's what an effective school board member does.
Thank you. The next question goes to you first, Mr. Banks. What issue are you most passionate about addressing as a school board member?
Thank you for that question. I'm very passionate about equity and diversity and inclusion. Right now, to be frank, that's something that the district struggles with, but I do know that leadership is working to change that, to make sure that our district is a district that is open to a variety of viewpoints, that our teachers are getting the resources that they need and deserve as it relates to equity and inclusion and diversity, and that the district makes this a priority. Equity, diversity, and inclusion must be a priority in the district because, again, our demographics are changing. Our statistics are showing that communities of color are moving to this area of the country in larger major than most other communities, and that would affect our schools, our school district, our regional school districts, and we need to implement sound policies that get at diversity, equity, and inclusion across the board.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat it, or are you good?
Yeah, if you could, thanks.
Okay.
I got kind of lost in Henry's.
Of course.
I was paying attention.
What issue are you most passionate about addressing as a school board member?
What I want to do is shift the priorities more into the classrooms. I think we've spent so much money here, over $2 billion, between operations and facilities in a little over a decade and a half, and just not enough has gone into the classrooms. And as Henry has said, and I totally agree with him, I certainly look at early childhood education. I would have 3rd grade, but, you know, this old saying, you know, that the child is learning to read, the 3rd grade after that, they're reading to learn. After you've lost them there, that's the pipeline, the prison, really. And if you look at American prisons, the illiteracy rate is just astounding. And so I want to focus on those early grades and whatever resources we have. And one of the things I have to point out is I've been around there forever, and I've seen people from the other side promise all these things, and they don't know anything about the budget. And there's an old saying that a politician doesn't have to do the math until after they're elected, you know, and sometimes in the boardroom, not even then. But, you know, I do think that you have to be realistic about what you can do within the budget, but there's been a lot of state money coming in, and I want to really focus on making sure that gets into the classrooms, particularly in the early grades, and there's a number of other growth areas in education. I want to focus that money in and really make sure that we are putting those resources in where they're going to do the most good to actually push the ball forward in education, move the needle, so to speak, more than we've been able to for all the money we've spent. We just simply have not gotten enough results from all that money, and I want to do a better job. That's a high priority for me.
Thank you, Mr. Martel. And you have the next question. As a board member, how will you balance the rights of parents to influence what their children are exposed to with the rights of all children within the district to have access to different ideas and points of view?
Could you read that one more time?
I will. "As a board member, how will you balance the rights of parents to influence what their children are exposed to with the rights of all children within the district to have access to different ideas and points of view?"
That is a terrific question, and it gets at the heart of so many things. Just last night, I was knocking on doors, and I knocked on the door of someone who was a very, very devout Christian. And, you know, she jumped on me because I really wasn't able to completely back her point of view, but I told her, I think you should stay in the game. I mean, she was even saying that we should pull out and get our own schools, and I just don't believe in that. I think that one of the missions of education is to engender tolerance, and I don't want anyone pulling out of the schools, and I want to protect every point of view. And I do think that there are certain groups that feel that their point of view is getting run over by another point of view, and I am really quite concerned about that, and concerned about the fact that people are talking about pulling out of the schools because they just don't believe in the agenda that's being forced upon them. And it is a real issue in the country. I've told people repeatedly that if we lose these people from our schools, we're losing their advocacy. We're losing so much more than just seats in the desks. We're losing their advocacy for those schools out in the community, and we need to keep them all in there, and we have to have intellectual diversity from every angle. I totally respect Henry Banks and all the work he's done, and I definitely would fight for his issues as well. But I would fight, and I told that person, that devout Christian, I said, nobody would fight harder for your voice in that room, too. Your deeply held, very sincere beliefs deserve respect, and I think every point of view in that room in our schools deserve respect, and I would fight for that with everything of God.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question, Mr. Banks?
Please.
Okay. "As a school board member, how will you balance the rights of parents to influence what their children are exposed to with the rights of all children within the district to have access to different ideas and points of view?"
Thank you again for that question. First of all, we'll say parents have the right to take their children out of the school. That is their right, but I would say I would listen to parents to get their viewpoint, and then I would take what they're saying, and I would apply some of my thoughts after listening to them to the mission of the school district. That current mission says every student, every day, will be empowered with learning opportunities for growth, creativity, and curiosity, and preparation for their future in a global community. A global community means when those students leave that school district, they will be prepared to work anywhere they want to work. At least, there's having that preparation moving forward, because the world is not just black and white. The world is not just Christian and non-Christian. There is everything in between. And so we have to make sure we prepare our students for the global community. Otherwise, we are doing our children... Otherwise, we are doing our children a disservice. The vision of the district says Duluth Public Schools provides an academically engaging, safe, and inclusive environment with high expectations and responsible use of resources. And what I would say to parents is, now that you know what the mission and vision is of the school district, it's important for me as a school board leader to listen to your viewpoints and hopefully apply what is necessary so that all students have and receive a high-quality education.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, what ideas do you have that would support student learning by attracting and retaining quality educators and increasing the representation of teachers of color in the classroom?
Thank you. I, I know that I talk about equity, diversity, and inclusion a lot in the work that I do. Uh, it is that important to me. Uh, the school district currently, uh, is severely lacking with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion with regard to leaders of color, teachers of color. Uh, in fact, there are no African-American teachers in the Duluth Public School system. Over the years, they've had one or two, maybe three at most. That does a disservice to our children because our children are not getting a real-world experience as to how they're being educated and by whom. Uh, and, and so I think it's important to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would, uh, as a board member, I would implement with the school district leadership a traveling team of teachers, retired teachers, administrators, community members. And I would say we would go to these institutions of higher learning where African heritage and Native heritage programs in those institutions, have some of the most incredible and intelligent teachers available to come to our district. We should start recruiting in those schools because currently we are not doing that. And so I would work to put together a team that would be the resource team to make sure that we start to change our school classrooms to really reflect what's happening in our country, in our region, in our state, and locally. Thank you.
Did you want me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay. What ideas do you have that would support student learning by attracting and retaining quality educators and increasing the representation of teachers of color in the classroom?
Well, sort of like Henry has, has a certain theme. I, you know, I come back to the money again, and I do think that, um, you know, you have to prioritize the money. I think it's very, very important to do that. Um, we've, we've got a lot of money coming in. I personally, to back up a little bit, i- if I'd been in the state capital, I would have focused more money specifically in, in areas that really need the money, and it would have gone to that need. But we're always fighting against the budget to some degree, but Henry is absolutely right. I mean, he's absolutely right that there's, that it's unacceptable that there's no, no African-American teachers in the public schools. I mean, that's, that's just, obviously doesn't reflect reality, and we have to move to, to correct that, without a doubt. How do you do it? I mean, some of Henry's ideas are good ideas, um, no doubt about it. But again, I want, I want to emphasize that we, that, you know, we were always going to run up against the budget, and how do we prioritize everything? I certainly, that's a high priority for me, don't get me wrong. But I also want to, I really want to focus, I do think that it's really important to look at things also from the poverty lens and, and disadvantaged lens. I, I got to talking to, I got to know him somewhat, the, the runner-up for the superintendent's position. He's been a superintendent in Albert Lee for many years, won Superintendent of the Year Award in Albert Lee, um, in 2022. And he's, he's, he got, he won that partly for all, all his, his achievements in, in that arena, closing the achievement gap, and he looks at it as strictly as a disadvantage, mostly as a disadvantaged, uh, an issue of disadvantage and poverty. And he addresses, catches it very early, and I want to get teachers there, real early. And, and hopefully can catch them before they're lost to us beyond third grade.
Thank you. Mr. Martel, describe your level of expertise in school finance. What are your views on allocating education funding in our district so that the money supports student learning?
Well, let's stop building buildings. I mean, we, we've spent, we've run up a bill well over half a billion dollars on buildings. I think we finally can stop, maybe. But actually, we're not likely going to be able to stop on maintenance because it's been such poor planning, just incredibly poor planning. A long-range facilities plan with no maintenance component, that's just completely unacceptable. And they're using maintenance money to build new buildings. They've been raiding the maintenance fund for years, paying a million dollars of wages and salaries out of it, using it as a slush fund. And that's just bad management of our money, and it just keeps piling up on the taxpayers. So, my, my, again, one of the reasons I want to get in there is to make sure that we start prioritizing those dollars correctly. I want that money to go into education, and I really want to look at those early grades. And I also will say, there's another aspect to this, and that is that it's a competitive marketplace. And we have to think about it in that, in those terms. And when I say that there's growth areas, there's three of them that I know of. Online education, language immersion, and career technical education. We have to look how we can grow those, those programs because those are growth areas, and they will give the very tools to the students that Henry is talking about in a global economy. And at the same time, it makes us more competitive in an increasingly competitive educational marketplace. I went to the street strategic planning sessions. I was there, and nobody even wanted to talk about this. This should be part of this long-range strategic plan of the district. Looking at the marketplace and how do we prioritize our money to both give the students what they need to succeed, but also to draw those families in. We had twenty-five thousand students in our school district in the seventies. We've got about eight thousand now. We've been, we've been at a disadvantage in the marketplace despite all the money we spent. And that's just poor prioritization of our, of our tax money, and we need to do a better job.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question? Describe your level of expertise in school finance. What are your views on allocating education funding in our district so that the money supports student learning?
Thank you. So, I'm a strong advocate of, uh, making sure that we, um, if we're given taxpayer dollars, that we are good or excellent stewards, really, of taxpayer dollars, that we don't just throw the money away frivolously, uh, that we are giving those dollars to the people, the individuals, that deserve it most, and that is our children. Uh, we need to put every effort into making sure that our kids are the best academically uh, in the state, if not the nation, as it was a number of years ago. And I get back to that because Duluth schools were amongst the best in the nation. And we have to invest in high-quality teachers, more high-quality teachers, high-quality teachers of color, high-quality administrators of color to start that process again. Uh, as board members, we have to pay attention to where those dollars are going. We cannot, we cannot be given, uh, leeway as it relates to just spending money. We have to know what we're spending it on and why we're spending it. It should not be frivolous. It should never be frivolous from the standpoint of, or we're, we're, we're doing this to our children. It's about our children's future. And it's important for us as a school district to educate each child for success. And I want to make sure that those dollars get to every child that needs and deserves those dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, District Three is a large and diverse district, and the priorities of your constituents will not always align with the direction set by the school district's strategic plans. What is your responsibility as a school board member to mediate those sometimes divisive and contentious differences?
Would you mind reading that again, please?
I wouldn't mind at all, of course. District Three is a large and diverse district, and the priorities of your constituents will not always align with the direction set by the district, school district's strategic plans. What is your responsibility as a school board member to mediate those sometimes divisive and contentious differences?
Thank you. First off, it would be a travesty, in my opinion, if we continue down the road of, uh, not representing our constituency. And because District Three is so incredibly diverse, with incredibly wonderful people from all walks of life, lots of people of color, lots of low-income families, lots of families that are higher income. And if I am selected, uh, for participation as a board member for ISD seven oh nine, I will be that mediator to make sure that the views, that the needs, that the representation of my constituency in District Three is well-represented uh, because we cannot continue, uh, to neglect that part of our community because our school district is a school district that is supposed to be for all children of the district. And, uh, I'm very clear about this. I have a voice for communities of color. I've always had a voice for communities of color. That voice has not always been at the district level, and I want to be that voice to start to say, here's what we're going to do in the representation of all of our students to make sure that they receive the appropriate and best education possible regardless of where they come from in the city.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question, or are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, the fact of the matter is, as I said before, it's sort of a thankless job, and the reality is that there's going to be disagreement. That's just the nature of the culture we're in. And, you know, particularly representing the third district and looking at the history of that district. Um, and I've been around for a long time, and I know the history of that district, and talk about underrepresented people. Those people were unrepresented in the third district. They were, all their promises were broken to them by their representative years ago. And that still lingers in the third district. And those voices feel like they've never been heard. And so there's always going to be that issue with, in our school district. They've, they've left a trail of broken promises in their wake. So again, how do we, how do we heal that now? Well, for one thing, you have to establish trust in, in my constituents in the center of part of the city. Trust me. They know I've played it straight with them all these years. I've, I've been in there, I've been digging for the truth. I've always played it straight with them. All, all these years, I've never sugarcoated anything. I've told them exactly where I stand. I tell them exactly what I've seen in the school district, what I consider to be the situation. I've dug in, I've dug, put in more information requests than anyone, and I've dug in to get to the facts. And at the end of the day, you have to have those facts. You have to have the ability to convince them that you're telling them the truth, and that you have to earn their trust. And I think there's been a lot of trust lost in the middle of the city. It's one of the reasons I'm running. And I know that I can reestablish that trust with a part of the community that the district has been unable to establish trust with. They trust me out there because they know me. I've been out, this is the twelfth time I've been out in fourteen years knocking on doors in school district-related issues. And a lot of that times have been out in the middle of the city. Those people know me well, and they trust me, and they'll believe me.
Thank you. Mr. Martel, what opportunities do you feel are important for our students who will not graduate or are not planning to attend college after graduation? Do you feel that a robust vocational and technical education program could benefit these students?
Oh, my God, yes. And it's been something I believed in for years. And, and I'm glad they put, uh, someone in, at the head of, um, career technical education again, um, after Mr. Veeth left, Brad Veeth, they didn't even replace that position, but they, they've got someone back in there. And in fact, I was just talking to an administrator that's quite affiliated with, with Henry's issue of minority issues and, and advancement for people of color. And he said, yes, 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 that's one place we have to go. And I've heard Henry say that we have to get more, um, um, collaboration with local business. I totally agree with him. And we were way ahead of the game with STC. It's just an example of, of the poor decision that was being, that was made there. We were way ahead of the game. People were coming from fifty miles around to go to that program. Now we have it hemmed into, that program hemmed into the two high schools. And what we have in East, the culinary program, is nowhere near what we had at, at STC, and that building is still sitting vacant. Twelve years later, it's still sitting vacant up there. A fifty-two thousand dollar, fifty-two thousand square-foot building. I meant to say that we had to spend two-point-three million dollars to pay off as it sat there empty. That is just terrible use of our finances. And so, yes, I believe strongly, it's the, it's the future, it's a great growth area, and I want it to be part of the long-range strategic plan. How we expand that program and give those students those tools. Because one thing I really like about it is that it gives students flexibility. Right now, the four-year degree often burdens them with so much debt, debt that they can't go back and retool. When I was young, you could go back and retool. Career technical education gets their foot in the, in the door. They get real-world experience, and they can go back and get a four-year degree if they want. It gives them a lot of flexibility to move in a very, very fluid economy, and I am a hundred percent behind it. It's a big priority for me.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat it? What opportu, what opportunities do you feel are important for our students who will not graduate or are not planning to attend college after graduation? Do you feel that a robust vocational and technical education program can benefit these students?
Thank you again for that question. I am a strong advocate, have been for decades with regard to secondary technical education. That was the biggest mistake that ISD seven oh nine made when it obliterated that program. That program was highly successful. It was benefiting a significant number of children who today, some of those children could use that program for their future. Uh, it's not always about educating children for college or university-level academics because a lot of kids don't want to go to college. Uh, they've made that decision early on. And so if we're going to be an effective school district, we will, I will, as a board member, revisit our secondary technical education programs. I will work to improve, enhance, and get that program back to its heyday because it was working. We have to be about making sure, as a school district, that we're educating each child for success. And what that means is, we're not educating each child for academics, for a four-year degree. Yes, we have some that will continue on to a college or university level of work, but we also have to make sure that we pay attention to those other students who don't have a four-year degree as something they want to do. Again, educating each child for success, whatever that may be, we should be doing that as a school district.
Thank you. This is our final question. Before giving your closing statements, are there any issues that weren't covered in our statements today, in our questions today, that you would like to address? Mr. Banks, you're first.
I just want to say, I, I really appreciate being here. If I were to have added anything, I, I would say, uh, we have to work. we have to work together better in this community. It's going to take the whole entire community to embrace our educational system here. Our public education system needs the business community. It needs the institutions of faith. It needs those institutions that have not been involved in the school district to make it a better school district. And so I think we have to pay attention to that because if our community's going to be better, if our school district is going to be the best it can be, it's going to take all of us. And so I want to make sure I mention that. Thank you.
Mr. Martel, same question. You want me to read it again?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
In fact, I agree with Henry. I think that, that he hit it right on the head. And I totally agree with him. And I would, I would say that sometimes people think that the school district can just do this in a vacuum, and it is impossible. You really can't just wave a magic wand from government and solve these problems. And one, and there's, you know, there's one thing that you haven't mentioned is, you know, the loss from the pandemic that people are still trying to catch up, school districts are still trying to catch up on. It's a big loss. That window of opportunity is closing. And there, and there's a companion loss there related to it, and that's absenteeism. And that, that really depends on the community. That depends on the families that get their kids into that school. So the school district cannot solve these problems solely by itself in a vacuum. I totally agree with Henry. This is a, this is a community effort, and the families have to be invested as well, and they have to do their part. They've got to get those schools, those, sorry, those students in the schools ready to learn, and that is the parent's responsibility. And we have to try to reach out to the parents and instill upon them, if their, if their child is still behind, particularly around, because of the pandemic and the window is closing, let's, you know, let's work together to get that child there and so that we can do our best to get that child up to speed because once that window's closed, it's closed forever on those kids.
Thank you. At this time, we will ask each candidate to give a two-minute closing statement. We will begin with Mr. Banks.
I would like to first thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to be here today. I will close by saying I embrace cooperation and collaboration. To succeed as a community, working together for the betterment of all, is imperative. The late U.S. Senator Paul Wellstone said it best, "We all do better when we all do better." Those words have resonated with me for more than 35 years. My work crosses an array of sectors, including founder and first co-chair of the Clayton Jackson McGee Memorial, serving on executive hiring committees for the Duluth Public School District, being developer, host, and senior producer of a top talk show in this region, state moderator for a federal housing program, cultural consultant to a statewide literary organization, instructor in a University of Minnesota program, vice president of the Duluth Transit Authority, former president of the D'Amiano Center, graduate of the Blenden Community Leadership Program, the Move the Mountain Leadership Center, Crossroads Ministry, and People's Institute, all nationally-recognized organizations and award-winning organizations at that. My leadership skills and integrity are above reproach. I have the ability to get things done. In the words of Wayne Dwyer, "If you change the way you look at things, the things you look at change." Please vote for me on Tuesday, August 8th. Thank you very much.
Mr. Martel?
Well, first of all, of course, I want to thank the League of Women Voters. It's a great forum, actually, and I want to thank Henry. Henry is quite eloquent and made a lot of good points. And I want to close the forum by elaborating on the point I began with. Online education is obviously going to grow as an educational option in the future. ISD 709 has a good online program with great growth potential, but poor planning has located that program in the Technology Village on East Superior Street. Taxpayers are currently paying over $400,000 a year to lease space in that building, and I think that is unacceptable after all the money spent on school buildings. A well-thought-out plan would have had that program in a real school building where it can grow. Language immersion is another growth area, but poor planning created a traffic and parking issue around Lowell School when the Spanish immersion program began to grow. Language immersion is a terrific way to teach bilingualism, and I believe fluency in another language is one of the best tools we can give students in a world that is increasingly dominated by a global economy. Not only are such programs a benefit to students, they make our public school district more competitive in an increasingly competitive educational marketplace. Career technical education is another growth area in education. We talked about it here. It's gained much interest in recent years. District 709 was once a leader in this area because of the wonderful STC program and its extraordinary, cutting-edge facilities. Moving out of that facility was a poor decision, as Henry himself said. But we must now discuss how we can foster and grow this program in the facilities that we have to work with. Growing these programs should be part of the long-range strategic plan of the school district, and I would be very focused on opening up that discussion as a board member. Thank you again for listening.
This concludes this candidate forum for ISD School Board District Three. It is our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact the candidates directly. We hope this program has helped you learn more about the candidates and issues so you can make informed choices at the polls on Tuesday, August 8th. Thank the, we thank the candidates and PAC TV for making this event possible. PAC TV will carry this forum and others. Check your listings for their, for the schedule of times. Links to these forums will also be on the League of Women Voters Duluth website. Thank you, everyone.